Misty, will you call the roll?
How Glanville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston. Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbeck.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
You're welcome.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone, tonight. Here we are again. Apologies for the mayor. He is out sick tonight, so you're stuck with me. Can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? First amendment would be to move the executive session to prior to personnel actions and to change it to personnel, South Dakota codified law 1-25-21, instead of legal. Second amendment is to add Personnel Action J, Bob Nelson Jr., city administrator, starting at sixth step at 2750 per hour, effective at a future date to be determined.
I make a motion to approve an amended agenda with the following amendments: move executive session to after public hearing and before personnel, and to change to personnel instead of legal, 1-25-2-1, and adding under personnel, item J, Bob Nelson Jr., city administrator, sixth step, 2750, an hour, effective at a future date to be determined.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll remind council that please abstain from any agenda item you feel you have a conflict of interest in prior to voting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 18th council meeting.
Second. Got a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $103,696.86.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $440,332.88.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card, excuse me, claims, $12,756.84.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. On our document, it reads $12,756.74. On our agenda, it reads $12,756.84.
Go with the 74, please.
Okay, we'll go with 74.
Does the second agree with that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any communications from the public? We do have a public hearing at 7:10. So Tracy, you're on for five minutes, our update on the road project and water and sewer replacement update.
Good evening. Well, I can probably accomplish, test, test, yes, okay, accomplish this in five minutes. We'll see. Well, as you can tell, there's been a lot more concrete. We have lights on North River Street now. They're still working out there right now, as they came down. Our crews are working on replacing, updating valve and fire hydrant down by, on Baltimore, the intersection with South Chicago Street. Looking towards the next few weeks, we will probably start to see some definite action and activity on the suspended sidewalk project. Now that that third section of concrete has been down for, I think, probably at least a week and a half, two weeks now, that will be at strength, and they will be able to use that for access to start working on the suspended sidewalk. The first thing they'll have to do, at least it's my understanding, they'll be removing the old railing, the pipe railing, the knee wall, concrete railing. So, yes, expect to see some definite activity going on there. Other areas closer to here, a lot of area has been prepped for placement of concrete. Of course, with our weather tonight, I'm wondering, you know, whether that might be set back again a little bit, as we had so much of that earlier in the season. As far as water and sewer projects, really, at this point, all that's going on is our replacement of valves or valves and fire hydrants that are associated with the project as it comes through town, probably in about a month, most likely November sometime. It is in the plan that they will start replacing the water main further north on North River Street. And in other water main news, our little project over on Lookout Avenue and Walnut Street is almost completely finished. That's been a quiet, uneventful project. It's kind of nice when we have those. So that's pretty much the update. If you have any questions.
Regarding the Lookout Avenue and Walnut Street project, we bid that with the intention that the city would do the paving. What is our plans for paving that disturbed?
Good question. Actually, it's on the schedule for that to be, to have the overlay done Thursday of this week, weather permitting. The same company that has done our other recent asphalt work will be coming in. Due to our staff, a lot of people being on vacation, and the water valve work today, tomorrow, we did opt to, I made the decision to have the contractor prep the trenches, but that's, that's the only thing that we added for the contractor's work, but, yes. And that street will be, the trenches will be placed with two-inch asphalt mat, and then the entire street will have an overlay of two inches. So those will be nicely upgraded streets when it's all done. So I think the people in those neighborhoods will appreciate that.
I have a question. It's not about the project. It's about the city property that's in Hot Springs Canyon, near our pump station, north of Hayden's property.
Oh, yes.
I'm wondering if we found out anything, if there's a water easement there or not?
Any records that I've seen, I have not seen a water easement on that particular part. That's a good reminder, hopefully tomorrow, when I go out and check some things out in that area, I will look and see if there's a point that's been set that is that dividing line. More than likely, the part that we're discussing does not have any type of a water main or any type of water pipe in it.
Or, yeah, doesn't need an easement, may not need an easement.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tracy.
Tracy, you said that there'd be some more work started up on the north side of River Street. How far up will that be?
That will go from where they left off up to Minicotta Avenue intersection.
Okay.
And that will be somewhat challenging. There's, it gets rather tight, the pipes cross, go somewhat diagonal. It's just the way, the curve and the way it has to hook up.
Thanks, Tracy.
Yep. Okay.
I'm gonna give you a break. It is 7:10.
Thanks, Tracy.
So we're gonna open up the, the public hearing for the proposed amendment to chapter 155 zoning code, creating a planned unit development, chapter number 155.032 F2, titled Planned Unit Development Number Two Martin Traxx, to the current list of City of Hot Springs zoning districts and amending the City of Hot Springs zoning map. Comments will be received tonight, but no actions will be taken, as not all requirements for the hearing have been met. An additional hearing will be set at a future date, once all hearing requirements have been addressed. Any comments received tonight will be noted and provided to council prior to the future hearing. So with that, if there's any comments from the public, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Council members, I'm Doug Mangold. I live at 327 Meadowlark Drive. My wife, Deb Mangold, is the president of the Homeowners Association, but she's sick tonight, so I'm, I'm here with deliberate remarks that she wanted me to pass on. Essentially, this is the Boulder Falls Association, Property Owners Association position. This has been, it's been agreed by all of the, the voted on, the officers of the association, and it's, and I'll summarize it here for you very quickly. First off, we absolutely support the building of the proposed new duplexes on Martin Traxx One and Two. We would like Martin Traxx One and Two to remain in the, in the association. We want the proposed construction to be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Control Committee, which is governed by our covenants. We want the construction to meet the standards prescribed in the covenants, unless, of course, our Architectural Control Committee waives it. We would like all of the covenants to remain applicable to the Martin Traxx One and Two. And we want to work with the city and Chuck Martin to arrive at a compromise that we can all be happy with. And finally, we agree with the lot lines and the setbacks as proposed in the PUD. So as you can see, we're sitting pretty well together. We have no contentions. Hopefully, we can get this included in the, in the project. Any questions?
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Mangold, M-A-
M-A-N-G-O-L-D.
Thank you.
I've got a copy of them. Who should I leave?
I can take-
You can leave those with the finance officer, Misty.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments regarding this?
Hello, city council. My name is Chuck Martin. And we just heard from the Homeowners Association, so I just got a little written statement that I want to kind of follow up with and make sure that everyone understands that this is a very formidable group, but I don't want to really mess with them, so we're all on the same page easily, so.
What is, what is your address, sir?
My address locally is 13077 Fall River Road.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I see the mayor's not here today, but thank you, city council, for having this hearing today. I want to thank Scott Sobe and the city staff for all the work to help me to get it to this point. I want to thank Don Olstead and the planning department, and members of, of all your work on this project, and the unanimous approval last week of our proposed PUD. I'm very excited to bring this project to the city of Hot Springs. I think it's well needed, as everyone's documented, from the hospital and everything, we need housing here. I believe it is a very well thought out and designed project that will add value to the golf course community. I do realize that the golf course and its community is one of the finest in the Black Hills. My intent is to continue and raise that value. Earlier today, I met with the Boulder Falls Homeowners Association, and I believe we have a very productive meeting. I believe we reached a solid agreement concerning the homeowners as a, as a solid becoming part of the, as I sell the properties, becoming part of the Homeowners Association. That's my whole intent there. Okay? The homes prior to the building will be approved by the Design Review Committee, the Homeowners Design Review Committee. We have no problem with that. The setbacks of the homes being approved as stated on our PUD request, we do request that, as our PUD is stated. We, we want to do that, and they were in agreement with that today. So I think, on all the issues, I think we had total agreement. We're also gonna work with them. We proposed a small little park. Whether they want to park or not, we're gonna look at different avenues for that. So we're, we're, we're all in with working with the Homeowners Association, okay? And again, thank you for your consideration of the planned unit development at the Hot Springs Golf Course Community. So that's pretty much what I have, unless you have any questions of me.
Did you have copies for us also?
I could give you my handwritten copy if you want.
I'd take it if that's okay.
Yeah.
And then I'm sure to capture every statement you made.
Any questions for Chuck, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions for this hearing? You're in the dark, Don.
Yeah. Don Olstead, planning and zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on this for quite some time. I've been involved in building in Hot Springs my entire life, and I've been here my entire life. And be assured, this is the most professional thing that's been brought to the city of Hot Springs in the last 50 years. So they follow step by step with the PUD stuff through there. The commission and the city is new to this process. The first thing we did was the mammoth site, and so we got some growing pains of steps making sure we follow everything correctly, and that's one reason for the delay, is it's gonna be tonight, initial development plans, and the final plan can be done at the same time, and that was a track we were taking here with this deal. But you've also got, in these plans that these guys have submitted, it's got the layout of the property, it's got the topographical included, the streets included, and the water and sewer. And I don't think anything's been done like this on a scale privately in this sector in Hot Springs, at least in my lifetime.
They haven't seen any of those yet.
I know.
PNC has, but you will.
We've been reviewing them, but I'm just telling you, the documents are complete, and you'll have access to all that stuff.
Great.
So I'm just saying, this is different than the normal run-of-the-mill, I'm gonna build about this size of a house on this lot, and then we go into the whole thing, well, there's no water and sewer, the drainage is a problem, we've affected neighbors. That's pretty much been taken into consideration in this thing. So if anybody's got any questions, feel free to call or, or attend one of the meetings.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I was always taught in my previous life to count to seven, and if nobody comes up, we'll close the hearing at 7:18 PM.
Council, have anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Okay. Thank you all for your participation and interest. Okay, next on the agenda, we have two proclamations. And first of all-
Was Tracy done?
Tracy, were you done?
Yeah, I was pretty much done.
Okay.
Yeah, he answered my question.
Thank you. First of all, do we have anybody from Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity? Would you like to come up?
Down front, Lacy.
You all hear me okay?
What?
We have a proclamation from the mayor. Lot of words. Hang with me. This is an executive proclamation, Hot Springs, South Dakota, office of the mayor. Whereas, more than 100,000 individuals live below the poverty line in South Dakota, and more than 3,500 affordable homes are needed in the Black Hills area. And whereas, Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity has served 365 families through affordable housing solutions, and will continue to address the lack of decent housing in our communities and around the world, while reducing environmental impact by recycling building materials through Habitat restores and, whereas, secure housing not only facilitates opportunities for health improvement, civic engagement, investment, and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of dignity and respect, and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. By offering a hand up, Habitat looks to help close the gap of growing inequality by committing to scaling up our process and working to offer as many families as possible stable housing opportunities. And whereas, the United Nations General Assembly has declared the first Monday in October as World Habitat Day, a time to unite in a worldwide effort to promote policies to ensure adequate shelter for all. By raising awareness and advocating for universal decent housing, we can change the systems that reinforce poverty, housing, and make affordable homes a reality for all. Now, therefore, on behalf of Bob Nelson, Mayor of Hot Springs, I do hereby designate October 2nd, 2023, as World Habitat Day, and encourage all Hot Springs citizens to work towards the elimination of inadequate housing. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Liz.
And watch the truck.
Yes, I got it.
It's a long ways down.
And this is a, an executive proclamation for the Kiwanis. Gotta get trifocal device. Whereas, Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world, with more than 600,000 members of all ages and abilities, in more than 80 nations. And whereas, members of, the members of the Kiwanis Club of the Black Hills are devoted to improving the world, one child in one community at a time, by seeking importance to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life. And whereas, in addition to improving the lives of children in the Hot Springs, South Dakota area, and communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of meaningful leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas, the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, USA, in 1950, and on September 29th, 1923, the first Kiwanis Club of the Black Hills was formed in Hot Springs, South Dakota. And whereas, the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of the Black Hills will continue to have a positive impact in our community. Now, therefore, on behalf of Bob Nelson, the mayor of the city of Hot Springs, South Dakota, I hereby proclaim September 30th, 2023, as the Kiwanis Club of the Black Hills Day, and hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Hot Springs, South Dakota, thereof, to render support to all the members of this international organization, who make themselves aware of the Kiwanis Club of the Black Hills, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to our homes, schools, and communities. Congratulations on your dedication.
I love that you didn't pass or note that we brought rain.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, first, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
I make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, 1-25-2-1.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and there will be associated action afterwards. And Misty, will you join us?
Oh, here's one here, too.
Hey, this is new roofs.
No, it's a sky.
You got another one there?
Yeah.
No, the skylights over there.
Right there, sir.
No, I'm talking about the.
Okay, there's one. I'll have to get some more pants. We're going to move them.
We just had a special roof job.
Make that call.
Got a shower cap box.
Umbrella?
I got a little sympathy left, that's all I can do.
I've got an umbrella.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Misty, will you show us back from executive session? It's.
Because I have got your mics on and I don't have the recording on.
Oh, not yet.
Not yet.
In just a moment.
He's saving the building.
Yes.
It's going to rain right in here. So I'll go get the.
Okay, if I hear it drip, I'll move it if I need to. Yep.
Maybe a timeout for drip.
Just want to say, after $255,000 on new roofs between this and the gym, I would hope that it went well.
Wonder how it is out there.
I don't know how you do that.
I don't know.
Because Skylight was leaking too, wasn't it?
I thought it was.
How about Skylight? Wasn't that leaking, Misty?
Yeah, but that's the third part.
Okay, Misty, will you show us back from executive session at 7:38 PM?
Yes, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J?
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions Item A through J.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2023-22, a resolution to surplus and sell city property, 28 concrete retaining wall caps?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-22, a resolution to surplus and sell city property, 28 concrete retaining wall caps.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we get a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
It's hard to hear all the way over here.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2023-23, a resolution to appoint Travis Orbach? Orbach? Back.
I make a motion.
To the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management Board Commissioners.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-23, resolution to appoint Travis Orback to the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Motion carries, or the resolution carries.
Linda, will that use this? Yes, thank you.
New business item A, can I get a motion to approve and authorize the finance officer to sign the quote from Toter to purchase 500 residential garbage totes?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the finance officer to sign the quote from Toter to purchase 596 gallon residential garbage totes at a total delivered price of $32,250 to be funded by future supplemental appropriation.
Second.
Any discussion? Just a reminder to council and the public, we have, we talked about this in Public Works a couple of months back. Our solid waste contractor Sanders has told us that we need additional totes. In talking with Billy with the street department, between damaged totes and the new homes that are being built, we need about 500. This will allow us to save money on shipping by getting this amount. It will meet our current needs, and we have this amount in unassigned or in the fund balance within the solid waste fund. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item B, can I get a motion to recognize and record the name of the suppliers to purchase 10,000 gallons of propane?
Make a motion to recognize and record the name of the supplier for the purchase of 10,000, up to 10,000 gallons of propane tanker load by the city shop as required by South Dakota Codified Law 5-18C-6. Purchase will be made with inning propane at a total delivered cost of $1.27 a gallon. Other vendors considered were McGas propane at $1.359 a gallon, and Nelson's Oil and Gas at $2 a gallon.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item C, can I get a motion to set a public hearing on October 16th at 7:00 PM on a special sale alcoholic beverage license?
I make a motion to set a public hearing on 10/16/23 at 7:10 PM on the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from Boys and Girls Club of Hot Springs for the Wine and Wreath fundraiser to be held on 11/18/23 at the Mammoth Site, 1800 US Highway 18, highway bypass.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item D, can I get a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the acknowledgement and certification required by Executive Order 2023-13, acknowledging and certifying the city as a contractor?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the acknowledgement and certification required by Executive Order 2023-13, acknowledging and certifying the state or the city has a contractor with the state of South Dakota, under, understands Article 3, Section 12 of the South Dakota Constitution.
Second.
Any discussion? Misty, I'm assuming, and you might have to straighten out my assumption, that is this because we are doing business as we took out a loan with the Department of Transportation?
We actually have several items that we fall into the category as being contractors with the state, so they use the pass-through money for the FAA for the airport projects. We have the seat plane there. There's several, we have the fire arrangement at Butler Park. There's several different contracts that we have with the state that make us fall under this category. This section or chapter is not new, and they're going to write it into future contracts, but because we have existing contracts.
So this brings us up to speed on our existing contracts?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item E, can I get a motion to award the bid and approve the contract with Atlas Exteriors for the amount of $135,500 for the replacement of the membrane roof at the Mueller Center?
I make a motion to award the bid and approve the contract with Atlas Exterior LLC in the amount of $135,500 for the replacement of the membrane roof on the Mueller Center, Mueller Civic Center lobby, and replacement of the hail-damaged Skylight.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on that Skylight, is there going to go with the prior, the one that we have now, or is there going to be a whole new design?
I believe it's replacement in kind.
So it's going to go as is before?
With a new one.
Okay.
And just for council and the public's information, the next lowest bid was about $169,000. Is that right, Hal?
Yes.
So this was definitely the lowest bid, and according to Tracy, I think he was happy with this contractor. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, Admin Finance, JR, Melissa?
The Admin Finance Committee met today at 1 o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center. Present were Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton, Co-Chair Councilwoman Melissa Niles, Councilman Al Glanville, and Chair JR Huddleston. Old Business, Item 1, additional costs related to water wastewater replacement road project, ongoing review and discussions necessary, funding for water wastewater overages, potential end-of-year inter-fund loan transfer, and delayed mid-year transfers, water wastewater. Reviewing in November. The projected date for the approval of transfers is November 20th. Item number 2, discuss selling land the city owns, 4.14 acres adjacent to Simon Quarry near Evergreen Cemetery, general government surplus, there's no update. Item B, 7-plus acres north of Hayden's property in Hot Brook Canyon, water replat and only offer for the buildable piece for sale, secure water line easement surplus, waiting on updates on the water easement. That was a question I asked Tracy tonight, if there was an easement or not, and he's going to look into it when he goes back out there. Item C, 100-plus acres near the Hot Brook Canyon pump station, pump station water, not the Meadow area. Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Leah Burgess, has been contacted. We need more information on conservation or land acquisition. It's under further review. Item 3, review utility fees, set new rates for 2024, 2025, and 2026, three years. Casey Burris Project Manager, Technical Assistance Provider, Midwest Assistance Program, 2.5% increase to rates, DANR considering change to minimum rate from $35 to $50. Ordinance revisions in the works. We reviewed the proposed changes to ordinance 1249 and 1250 with the objective to remove the fees. I believe, Misty, you handed those out to everybody tonight.
If those that didn't get paper copies have electronic copies in their emails.
And that's, again, those ordinances, 1249 and 1250. Item 4, review, discuss, propose changes, additions to city Hot Springs personnel policies, clothing, TikTok, paid night differential, overtime clarification for exempt employees, exempt employee use of leave, flexible work arrangements, remote work, travel expenses, work on a holiday clarification, and return of city property, and City Hot Springs Safety Manual clarifying PPE standards. PPE is Personal Protective Equipment, and per diem rates. Identified SDML policies to add to. Identified SDML policies to add to our policies. The committee discussed additions and deletions. We are waiting the mayor to discuss the per diem rates and the review is continuing. New business, item one, South Dakota DOT loan request, review plans and figures, planning to ask DOT for dollars. Committee does not want to draw from any drafts that are on available South Dakota DOT loan funding until 2024. And we're keeping an eye on that, Misty is, to assure that we know if it takes two to three months for that to come through, for instance, that she will be aware of it ahead of time and be able to put in for it to be able to hit us at the prime time where we don't fall on our ears or have any issues. Budget operating transfers from water wastewater funds are looking okay. It appears that the transfers are on track. Number three, discuss PD doing background checks, have no update, awaiting chief of police concurrence. Background checks will be needed for daycare, liquor, cannabis, and post offer employment, referring this to the safety committee for Thursday, so we can discuss that with Ross then.
Okay.
Review, number four, review restaurant liquor license, awaiting attorney response. New business only, and it's considering hard liquor. Number five, proposed job description change review, that was reviewed earlier. Number six, repayment of expenses, training, certification of clothing, equipment, policy draft review. Committee reviewed the repayment expenses document and concurred. Item seven, Mayor Nelson, he was absent. Item eight, review monthly finance reports. Misty reviewed the financial reports with the committee. And item nine, committee member items, there were none. Meeting adjourned at 2:35 PM. Our next meeting is November 6th at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center. JR Huddleston Chair. Subject to your questions.
Thank you, JR. Melissa, anything to add?
No.
Counsel, any questions for JR and Melissa? Okay. Airport, Travis?
The airport advisory committee will meet again this Thursday at 8:30 AM on the 5th at the, at the airport.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Travis?
Larry, you want me to read this?
That's the, I gave you the agenda for what's going to be on the meeting and you can give the next meeting on that piece of paper I gave you. That just gives you an idea of what you're going to be up against when you start to do this, and it's going to be every other month that you'll be attending the meetings, Thursday nights at 7:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Okay, the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Committee will meet again next on November 9th at 7 o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Travis. Deb is not here, so no report for the Historic Preservation Commission. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Linda?
Okay, our next advisory committee meeting will be next Thursday, October 12th at noon at the plunge.
Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Larry?
Next meeting will be this Wednesday, the 4th at 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Okay, thank you. And Deb is gone, so no Planning and Zoning Commission?
The next meeting is 10/18 at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety, JR?
The Public Safety will meet Thursday at 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center. All are welcome. Caught me off guard.
You're welcome. Public Works, Hal?
Public Works met Thursday, September the 26th at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center. Members present were myself, Deborah Johnson, Bill Lukens, Mayor Bob Nelson, Public Works Engineer Tracy, Tracy, excuse me, Bastian. Adoption of the agenda, agenda was modified to accommodate conflicting schedule. There were no communications for the public. New business items, the committee reviewed the way finding sign information provided by ISG. Questions and comments will be forwarded to ISG and the next step will be to generate an internal cost assessment for the project. Number two, the proposed revisions for Title V, chapters 51 and 52, the water wastewater ordinances were reviewed. The committee supports proposed revisions. Number three, Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian reviewed the bids for the Mueller Center and skylight replacement. Atlas Enterprises was the low bidder at 135. The other bids were $169,057 and $169,344 with 48 cents. The committee recommends accepting the Atlas Enterprises bid. Number four, the committee chair reviewed special project tracking spreadsheet with the committee. Number five, there were no departmental summaries available for the meeting. Meeting adjourned at 3:09. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October the 10th here at the Mueller Center at 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Hal.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Hal or myself? Okay, and no report from Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee?
We meet October 10th at 6:00 PM at the Pro Shop.
Thank you, Misty.
And I would like to mention Historic Preservation, I'm sorry I missed that one. The next meeting is this Wednesday, the 4th at 5:00 PM at the Mueller Center. In attendance will be our state legislators, our district and state legislators, and we're going to talk about potentially ways to fund historic preservation or help communities like ours fund historic preservation.
What's that date?
Wednesday, the 4th.
Thank you.
What time?
That is Wednesday, right?
What time?
Second, third, fourth, yep.
What time?
At what time?
At 5:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Okay, thank you. Finance Officer Report.
Thank you. Attached to the memo, you have your regular financial reports. Due to timing, they don't reflect the entire month of September, just through the 28th. Your year-to-date profit and loss summary report does show three funds with a year-to-date loss. Our Business Improvement District, or 213 Fund, is showing $28,174.15 of a loss, so expenditures are exceeding revenues. Our Hot Springs Capital Improvements, we're paying for our sidewalk project, is showing a $2,118,000 loss. We don't get any money in that fund, so that's not a surprise. Our golf course is showing just a little over $3,000 as a year-to-date loss. The fund summary budget to actual shows you how each of those funds are doing compared to the budget or our plan. So each of the same funds on that last page, as you can see, the Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund is the only one that's really exceeding expenditures. If we exceed revenues, we don't get too worked up about it, but we pay a lot of attention to those that exceed expenditures, and we will be taking care of that by supplemental appropriation in November when we have a better idea of how much in total we're going to need for the project by the end of the year. So I'll be using that crystal ball you gave me, Larry, to try to figure that out.
Yes, ma'am.
The cash balance report is for our main Wells Fargo checking account and breaks up the balances by fund, a little over 12 million in that account. And then the last three pages are your investment reports, which breaks up all of the cash assets of the city by institution and then by type. And we did just recently renew our Evans Plunge Debt Service Reserve Fund. We were in a one-year treasury bond and we renewed to a new treasury bond, and so in the next report, you'll see a new maturity date and a new rate listed on there. In the memo, I summarized the work the Administrative and Finance Committee has been doing on the Personal Policy and Safety Manual revisions for over a year now. You've been hearing committee reports regarding clothing policy prohibiting TikTok, clarifying the hours of PD night differential pay, overtime, exempt employees use of leave, travel expenses, clarification work on a holiday, and adding cold weather gear as standards to PPE to the safety manual. And finally, I believe we're getting close to presenting you with a draft of these proposed changes. I believe that I'll be able to share info only. I said in this memo by the second meeting in October, not knowing that the mayor wouldn't be present for our admin finance meeting, we really want to give him an opportunity to weigh in, especially on the per diem, which is a change that he was recommending, so it more likely will be in November before you even see the proposed changes, and then we'll have it come before you after you get a couple of weeks to review those proposed changes. It's important to remember that our policies are modeled after policies drafted by the municipal league to provide us with practical guide to managing our human resources by adopting formalized written policies that lead to sound administration. They're needed to prevent conflict of interest, discrimination, and preferred employee status, as well as defend us against accusations of preferential treatment. We could be held liable for breaking an employment contract if our policy manuals are not constructed properly and are not consistently adhered to. And you heard JR mentioned in a memo or in his admin finance committee report that we found a few items in their proposed policy that we didn't have in ours and talked through which ones we want to add, so you'll see those on the proposed recommendations when they finally come out. It's hard to believe we're in the last quarter of 2023. I did a summary for you of our year-to-date sales tax collections, which are showing an increase overall of 3% or $52,000 over the same time last year. The gross receipt tax, which is what funds our 211 or Liquor Lodging and Dining Fund with 80% going to the chamber, is up 8.5% or $11,000 from this time last year. Thank you for your approval and passage of the 2024 budget. I was able to certify the municipal tax levy at the increased or maximum amount of $1,370,434 for 2024. Although our levied amount increased by the max allowable CPI and growth percentages, the overall mil levy for the city decreased from 4.89 to 4.24 per thousand dollars of taxable value, and this means a lower property tax for homeowners in the city if no changes to property valuations over the last year occurred. Finance has been assisting the utility departments in revising Title V of Public Works, which includes chapters 51 Water and 52 Wastewater and Storm Sewer. To present to council for the first reading by the second meeting in October, revisions were necessary to remove the five-year rate schedules, which expire at the end of this year, as well as clarify some areas of the existing ordinance to better explain responsibility and to expand rules related to commercial septic pumping businesses, use of our wastewater plant for dumping. As with all ordinance revisions, it will require two readings, publication, and the passage of 20 days before becoming effective. You have copies of those changes. As a reminder, that's not the entire ordinance. Those are just sections of the ordinances where changes are being recommended. If you want to review the entire ordinance, it's available on our website. I appreciated being included in the city administrator interviews that were held last week, and I'm anxiously looking forward to once again having this very important role within the city filled. Of the four applicants we had, one stood out above the rest, and I'm hopeful, well, I don't have to be hopeful anymore, I'm thankful that the individual selected, accepted the position, and that you approved the hiring decision, so thank you. Without complaining too much, I'd share that City Hall and all other departments within the city suffer without a city administrator, although we all try and pick up as many pieces as we can, as do you. It's usually not enough, and I'm looking forward to having a replacement start as soon as possible. I didn't mention on here, but Ariel and I both will be out of office for the SDML Annual Conference Wednesday, Thursday, and I don't think she's coming up Friday because it's just half a day, but I will be there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I'll be coming back Wednesday night for the historic district meeting, but then staying up there Thursday night and staying for all day Friday, and thank you for approving my travel requests on an earlier agenda to do that. That's all I have for my finance officer report. I do have a written mayor's report.
Okay, any questions for Misty on the finance officer report?
Why do we use Wells Fargo?
We can talk about that. There's a lot of reasons, and we've looked at others, and we're not stuck there forever. So if you want to ask that question when we have some time to discuss the details of it, I'd be happy to.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. All right, so Mayor Nelson asked me to read his mayor's report. Hello, council and members of the public. While I'm typically a private person, I believe you and the public have a right to know why I've been absent for the last four council meetings. On Monday, August 14th, our daughter went in for what was supposed to be a same-day surgical procedure with a scheduled overnight stay. She was discharged from the surgical center on the morning of Tuesday, August 15th. By that Tuesday evening, her condition had worsened and, sorry, and her daughter took her to the emergency room at Monument Health. It was decided she should be transferred to a higher level of care hospital, and she was air flighted on Wednesday, August 16th to the University of Iowa Hospital in critical but stable condition. On arrival at the hospital, it was determined that her condition would require exploratory surgery to find out what was wrong with her. That procedure resulted in a significant surgical wound. After spending time in ICU and on the general care ward, she was then transferred to the University of Iowa Rehabilitation Hospital to regain her strength and learn skills that would allow her to function on her own when she returned home. On Wednesday, September 18th, her daughter and I brought her back to her home in Rapid City. I was absent for those first three council meetings because her and her, because her mom and I chose to stay in Iowa with our daughter while she was fighting to get her life back. My plan, hope, desire was to be able to join you again tonight, but obviously that didn't happen. Both my wife and I have tested positive for COVID. I'll follow the CDC COVID protocols and hope I can join you at the next council meeting. I also want to thank everyone that picked up my load while I was gone. The finance office, Misty and Ariel, the front desk ladies Barb and Mary, and Tracy, the city engineer, all the department heads and the frontline employees. Because of these people, I've come to understand that city government runs very efficiently if the mayor and council stay out of the way. I also received a number of calls from other council members offering support in my situation. Council Vice President Huddleston stood in for me by presenting a proclamation to the Kiwanis on Saturday, September 30th. And finally, I want to thank Council President Lukens. He's made my extended absence possible. Each time I called Bill to let him know I needed more time, he made it easy by simply asking, what can I do to take the load off you? Thank you, Bill. I'm proud of all the city employees and this council. They have the best interests of the city in mind each day they come to work. Thank you for working to make Hot Springs the best she can be. I didn't know it was a she, but that's it.
He was Navy, so yeah.
What's that?
And he was in the Navy, so yeah. I couldn't resist. Thank you. Okay. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Drive careful there.